Afternoon, everyone.
Thanks.
Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're beginning our meeting at four thirty P M in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have Councilman Chris Shisana's excused tonight. All other members are present. We have Councilman Norfeld, Councilman Hune, Councilman Fitziamanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have our minutes of September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Turn those to the council for discussion or motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I have motion on second. All in favor, say aye. And both stand approved. We have our regular meeting review for tonight. We'll turn the time over to Ms. Kamic. She's got a couple additions.
So we added two new items. The first is the recognition of Brent Fuller. He served on the planning commission since nineteen ninety-two and recently decided to retire his position. And then we also, so this was my fault, but the council actually voted a couple of weeks ago on a zone change. We, I included all the documents for the development agreement, but forgot to actually put the action item for the development agreement. So we just wanted to make sure that we have that on the record. And that was just for one. It's at thirty seventy-six South Decker Lake Drive. It's those units there. They just wanted to add additional options for a tenant and the development agreement they had in place just had to be modified slightly to allow that, so. We just wanted to make sure we have the action on on record.
Any questions on that one? We'll go to our awards. So we are recognizing Ms. Kamic next week. When she's like, no, please. She has earned the master municipal clerk or designation from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And it'll be presented by the Utah Municipal Clerk Association. But we don't have to do anything.
No.
But I want you to know this is really awkward for
Yes, it is.
Yeah, because you have to put the tender together, but this is a really big deal and you should be recognized. Glad that we're having somebody come and explain that a little bit more, but it's a lot of hard work of my understanding, my experience. Not not something that you just get. It's a certification. It really takes time. I don't know how long the public have you been working on.
Six years.
Six years.
Oh, really?
Five years.
Yeah, so this is a so, yeah, it's I don't think Nicole wants to, wanted to put it on herself, but kind of forcing her to.
Congratulations.
It's awesome. Okay, and then we have a proclamation declaring November one as extra mile day. So is there a council member that would like to read that for us? Okay, thank you. Lars will do that. And then we have a public hearing on October twenty-second, GPC five, two thousand and twenty-four. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll here the usual presentation here. So this is an application by Grow Development LLC to amend the city's general plan and zoning. So you have property that's at thirty-eight fourteen and thirty-eight seventy-six South, six thousand west, so a little bit under seven acres. You can see the two properties highlighted in red here. So the the north partial has a general plan designation of low-density residential and the south partial has a large lot residential designation. And the zone is the agricultural zone and the request here is to change the zoning to the R one eight zone with a P V designation and then the general plan will be small lot residential. So that's the request. Just to orient everyone, so you have there's Hunter Junior High School to the west, a church to the south, you have homes to the north and the east. If we go to this next slide, so just for context here. So both of these properties are developed currently. The south partial just has two homes on on that parcel. Those are older homes built in the, one was in nineteen twenty-eight, the other nineteen thirty-six, are pretty old. And they're not in great shape. The the north parcel actually has a total of seventeen housing units on it. So those include thirteen homes and then two duplexes. And those were all built in the fifties and are fairly small. So just based on the county information, each of those units is just over six hundred square feet. So that's what's on the site currently. This just shows a zoning on this property. So again, the properties in red are the ones in question. Those are zoned agricultural. And you can see the zoning pretty much to the north and the east is zoned R one eight, which is the the request here. So initially, the the first proposal was for P U D with forty-two units. And this shows the concept of the time. The challenge we saw here was this lot count was you had a number or quite a few lots that were forty-five foot widths, which didn't really give you the option of having parking to the side of the house. And so also, we weren't, wanted, we had some concerns about their open space concept here, which is the image to the right of the two images to the right kind of show the proposed open areas at either or both cul-de-sacs. So by going down to forty-one units, which is what this shows, you're able to get the majority of the the lots to be fifty feet. Now, again, that's why that's significant is that that allows you to have one side of the house to have a ten-foot setback, so you can have parking on the side of the garage in addition to the garage. So basically, this, under this concept, you would hit the the four point seven five stalls per unit, which is what the code requires. So two in the garage, two in the driveway, and then most of the lots would have space for parking to the side of the house. Under this concept, too, it does show that they're proposing essentially three, three amenities as part of this. So one, the open area on the north end would be a sport court. And then on the south end, you would have a tot lot and then a pithering in there. Got a number of pictures here to illustrate kind of the existing condition of the property. So this is looking north on six thousand west. And then the the property that's there on the left-hand side is basically where the the church just abuts the the property in question. And you can see curb and gutter, curb better and sidewalk just basically ends at the edge of this property. And so pretty much all of the frontage along six thousand west has no improvements at this point. So if if this project were to move forward, that would be a requirement that the curb better and sidewalk be installed along six thousand west. This is the first home on the south parcel, so starting from the south and moving north, so you can see that home. Then another one of the homes on the south parcel. Then beginning on the north parcel, this is one of the homes there. This is one of the duplex units. It's on that property. They're all pretty much the same, just some are attached and most are detached. Another one of the duplexes. This is the home that is furthest to the north that's facing six thousand west. This image is looking south, so this is now on the north end of the property, looking south on sixty. So you can see here how the curb and gutter just kind of dead ends up up against this property. And turning into the side. So this is the the private driveway that goes back into the property. Again, this is just all one piece of property. So these are all rental units. And I can see again that a single car garage. These are all the, all the same style of house built in the fifties. This is looking down another one of the streets within the, within the same property. There's a couple more here. All again, this is one of those. You've seen one, you've seen them all, right? And then this image is actually taken from the junior high school, looking more towards the southeast so that where that kind of tree line is there in the fence is the west side of the property. And these are the, there's four different elevations that are included in the development agreement for home plans. These would all be two-story, given the the size of the lot. And so just variations of the same, same kind of planning. Those again are included in the development. So maybe just go back to the the concept plan just for reference. So to summarize, the the proposal here would be to demolish all the existing units that are on the property. And then develop this P D where this would be a public street, which is now required. So this would just be our typical residential street. You'd have a total of forty-one lots, which is just over six units to the acre in terms of density. And then the development agreement does include provisions about setbacks, the amenities that would be provided. Parking also gets into the unit sizes and the other design features like having porches on the homes. And that sort of that provides a summary of what's requested here.
Okay, thank you. To the council, any questions or discussion?
Steve, R one eight says minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet.
Right.
Number eight thousand square feet. Can you talk about that?
That. So with the P U D, the code does allow the option of doing lots that are smaller than what the zoning would require. And so if they, if they provide amenity space, which they they do, which would be just blow up an acre of property, they can request as part of the P U D to do lots that are smaller than that. So we have a number of projects in the city that are, that are similar, where they have a a zone that's saved by ours eight or ten thousand square feet, but then because of the P U D, they are able to do a smaller lots by the size.
Other variants is requested than the parameters bar one eight or stuff. It's the last.
It's so in addition to that, so they do have where the lots are smaller than eight thousand, they have setbacks that are a little bit reduced from that, which again, we've done in other P U D settings, just given that the lots are smaller.
On the homes across the street, you know, set of sixtieth.
Just estimating, there would probably be eighty, so that, so the property across the street is zoned R one eight. And so depending when it was built, it was, it's probably around eighty feet is would be my guess there.
And any thoughts, hope we could add to the development's image, that's end up like a treasure aisle.
So I, since we've had the, so this, this proposal started after we were kind of well underway under the the drive-in property. So I can discuss with them some of the the things that we did on the the drive-in properties as a possibility and see if the developers open to looking at some of those items that were included in that development agreement.
And that included like restrictions on separate basement entrances.
That also, so in this case, there will be an H O A because of the the common area. And so in in that one, we also limited, or the, there's a provision said the H O A would limit how many could be rental properties, basically.
Thoughts on street parking on six thousand? I know that's just quite a slope there and cars come down there pretty quickly. And there are, there is on street parking further down six thousand north of this area, but I don't know if there's any possibility of adding restriction on street parking in six thousand.
So I'm looking to Dan, I see him shaking his head. It sounds like right now we're not, but that would be a possibility. So within, within the development, and these would be public streets, so they're just given their typical residential streets, I don't see that there'd be maybe a really need for restrictions within it, but possibly on sixtieth west.
I mean, my preference is pretty deep, pretty good grade there and I don't know, the shoulder down further north, six thousand huge area and carts still parked there and it's just dangerous.
One thing I didn't mention that I think is a, is a benefit, just given the position here. So between thirty-fifth South and forty-one hundred South, the only place you can cross Mountain View Quarter is Summer Drive. So this just happens to be aligned with Summer Drive, so people in this development could just essentially, you know, go over Mountain Quarter. So that, that's a pretty convenient location, given that's the only place you can cross Mountain View, short of building to thirty-fifth and forty-one.
Developer, you were talking about, it's a grow development LLC, they done business with us before.
So one of the partners has but many, many years ago, but it's, but not recently.
Reform case, I mean, they're very quality. The products were very good.
I, you know, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what some of the projects they've done recently, so I don't know if I could, if I could speak to that.
Thank you.
So much for myself, having a park pretty much right across the street. There's a lot of open space out in that area. I would rather eight thousand square foot lots in the open space within the subdivision. The backyards are only fifteen feet. The front yard's twenty. I wouldn't even be able to park my truck in the driveway without it going over the drive, over the sidewalk. So.
So, so the
Size of the lots.
Yeah, they say the front, the front yards are twenty, twenty feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
And my truck's twenty-three, with the hitch is twenty-four. So everybody would have bruises around their knees as they walked past. So that's just a visitor, not somebody that's pulling in the garage. I don't know how deep their garages are. If a normal suburban would fit in there or not. So the P U D not really in favor of that, having the lot so small.
I know the the applicant can speak more to to why that was requested. One thing is, we were talking with the landowners early on. I think the the challenge is that, given the units that are there on their property, there's a certain amount of rental income they get just from the property already. And so to to make it like financially feasible for them to get kind of the return they're looking for, given the rent that's coming off their property, that doing just eight thousand square foot lots just didn't get the return that that would make it worth redeveloping.
But are we supposed to look at the financial implications for the owners? Or are we supposed to look at what's best for the community?
I I think the reason I I brought that up is that the that it would likely remain as is. So I guess that that's kind of the trade-off, right? Is that, are we, are we good having it continue to be what it is from a community standpoint versus something like this?
Yeah. And then backing out onto six thousand, I don't even know how that is. I don't use six thousand a ton to ask people that live on there if it's good or bad. Because I was hoping that I'll have circular drive, so you could just pull in and pull out. Oh, with twenty feet, you can't do that. So.
Well, and it's worse with the degrade, visibility is reduced. Backing out, looking for the sound.
Any other comments or questions? And this one is going to come up on our agenda. Twenty-second of October.
Steve, on the building materials, notice that they, they only need twenty-five percent that's not stucco.
Yeah, so well, they, their proposal is that they're being right, that, you know, the twenty-five percent being brick or stone. So the so it's been a few years now that we had very specific standards on materials, but then had to jettison those. And so so they they have this proposal, but certainly we could suggest something different there. This is what they they had proposed.
Since that change two years ago, it prevented us from acquiring that. Have we have we been holding people to the old standards in the development agreement? Most of the time or?
So we have in some cases, other cases we have not. I don't know if I could say like how how many, how many we did, how many we didn't, but it's been, it's been mixed. I think particularly on projects where there's larger lots, we've more stuck to that, but where smaller kind of infill projects, we have, we have done smaller or lesser standards in those cases.
Seeing no other comments. We'll move on to the next item. We'll go to our resolutions, twenty-four dash one forty-six, and we'll turn the time over to Chief Jacobs. You have two in a row, so we'll do forty-six, then forty-seven.
Colleen Jacobs, Chief of Police. And I'm sorry, I didn't make note of the numbers. Do you want the library one first or the other one?
I think it's the library.
The library agreement first?
Nope, it's the other one.
The other one, okay.
Firearms.
All right, let me explain kind of what this request, where this request is coming from. We have a need to lessen the number of firearms we are storing in evidence. There are three ways the law allows for disposition of firearms no longer needed as evidence. Transfer them, transferring them to the state, who's not accepting them, selling them to a federally licensed firearm dealer, or destroying the firearm if it's unfit for sale. That being said, we've sold several firearms to federally licensed firearm dealer that we normally do business with and now have a credit with that business. Now, this is why I'm here before you. State law requires approval from council to apply the proceeds from the sale of confiscated and unclaimed firearms to a public interest use. We are asking that these funds be used to purchase ammunition to aid in firearms proficiency for police officers. So the issue and resolution before you today is the approval and designation of those public interest use funds.
Not asking how you get rid of them, just once you get the funds, what to do with them?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Great. Welcome to a library.
All right, this is an amended interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County and is to provide off-duty police services to Salt Lake County's library at the West Valley branch. The original agreement was March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, and this will extend it through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. There's no changes, just the extended agreement.
And it's just for the one library, not both of them?
Just the one.
And it's the West Valley, not?
Correct, it's the one right over here.
This one here? Oh, yeah, the other one's Hunter. Okay. Any questions on that one? Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, we'll now turn the time to Mr. Arslanian for resolution twenty-four, one forty-eight and one forty-nine.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, there is a resolution to redo the roof membrane on the Utah Cultural Celebration Center. To give you a little background, thank you, that's the right picture. The other one was much smaller. To give you a little background, the council approved the program mod several years ago on this project. But I had to hold it back a little bit because we wanted to redo the rooftop unit, their conditioning system on the cultural center, which constitutes of relocating a unit from this space, a larger unit over the main space of the roof. Consequently, you're going to penetrate the roof in several places and add a chiller system, which is down here by the dumpster, where the piping of the chiller goes all the way up the roof and comes up and attaches to the rooftop units. So because of that reason, we postponed the replacement of the roof approximately two years now. And now we're able to finish up the project and install and operate the new HVAC system at the cultural center. Now is the time for us to replace the roof and all the new penetrations, including the roof hatches and what have you. We received three proposals and two out of the three we have used in the past. And the lowest responsible proposal came from Broken Arrow Roofing. And all of these, the three contractors are responsible bidders. We've used both of them, as I mentioned in the past, and all of these have to be certified and and to give workmanship and warranty on this roofing membrane. We chose a Duralast roofing is a PVC roof, which we have it on City Hall and several of our other facilities. We've, we're very happy with it. The material itself and the workmanship for the installation are impeccable. Very little to non-leakage, I would say. Very little to non leakage, I would say. So we're recommending to. Give the contract to Broken Arrow to replace the roof for the amount of two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. The roof is about twenty eight thousand square feet.
To the council, any questions?
Sorry, if you've mentioned this and I missed it, but what's the projected or estimated longevity of this product?
Twenty years or better. Uh, the membrane that's on this roof is about twenty four years now. Without any replacements or patches as of yet. Let's not.
A twenty year warranty?
This one comes with twenty year warranty and NDL, no dollar limit.
Okay.
So this is a little bit different than just the blank twenty year warranty. So we're very happy with that. Because you know, prices go up. We won't pay any. Price changes, differences.
Will they get this finished before winter sets in, or is this a next year project?
We're trying. We, we, we're hoping to start on it as soon as possible. We don't know what the weather is doing nowadays. We're puzzled as everybody.
Hey, any no other questions? We'll move on to the construction of a garage.
Again, before you is a long overdue. Uh, construction of a garage for our graffiti. Uh, vehicle that Jake Chevizi Day uses. Um, almost every day and summer and winter. This project also was approved several years ago. Uh, as a program mod and we did not have enough funding at the time. And this time the program mod was approved for a hundred thousand dollars to install this. So. We toyed with it, where to put this building that it makes the most sense. And it would not interrupt the actual service of the animal shelter because it would be behind the shelter itself. So when we presented this idea to our community development and, and planning and zoning staff. We wanted to match. As much as possible of the existing building. So if you would look at. Uh, this portion of the building. See, on the right side, my right side, uh, there is a brick. On the left side, there is brick, but the center portion is siding to give that contrast. We wanted to build a garage that looks. Very similar to that in the back of the building. So. Sorry. So if you recognize the building, it's in a dog. Leg shape. And originally we were thinking to put it right behind the existing carport or the drive through garage. But then we realized that we have a new shed that we put in at the animal shelter uses extensively. And we also found out that we have several of our water mains to the building. Are in this area. So we approved it from our building officials and our planning zoning staff. To install it in this corner, which is away from everything and it will be facing the, the. The driveway that will be in the parking lot itself. And yes, he, Jake has to uh drive in and back up or back up and, and drive forward. The garage will be twenty four by thirty. That gives him enough room. To have shelfings, which we will install for him to, for all the paint. And the paint supplies, then the removals and all the graffiti supplies. So the garage will be. Shelfed from both sides and the back to house all of his equipment and. Consequently, by doing this garage will be tempered, so he doesn't have to take all the paint. In the winter time when he's using it quite a bit off and on the vehicle and. Clean the paint equipment extensively for it to stay outside in the weather. So I believe this is going to be a plus for our graffiti uh unit and. For our CPD department. Again, we. All of the funding is in place, but we do need to have budget opening because the fund is in place. We just need to open it up so that we could pay for it. The lowest responsible bid is the Roper Buildings. As you could see, one of them didn't want the job, obviously, when two of them were very close and one of them is a hundred and two thousand. So we're not that gullible.
Okay, to the council, any questions? So are you making it, you're making it the siding like the front of the building, the red?
Yes.
So will it be aluminum siding?
It would be same material, which is aluminum with white and the garage door will be white. To match that front end. Can you go back, please?
Well, my only question. Is the baseball field. So is it going to get zinged by home runs?
I hope not. We're, we're pretty far. We haven't had any balls or any issues with. Any activities that have happened in the baseball field before.
And then you said, um, it is going to be heated?
Yes.
And are they building that in or are we doing that on our own?
The, this construction uh of the actual garage is purchased and installed. We will be doing.
We'll be there.
We will be doing the heating unit, our electrician, our plumber, our HVAC guy. We're doing a lot of stuff in-house nowadays as possible. So that we could reduce costs and make it possible for us to do more projects.
So that's the difference between the thirty eight thousand and the forty five. Well, it was forty five total.
Yes, and, and there is some electrical that we will do, some plumbing we will do that is beyond the forty five. Is for the actual structure itself. If we go, there's always change orders. That's I always would like to put in some dollars, just in case thirty eight was not enough.
So what do you project the total build out then for the electrical, the plumbing? Are you doing an electric heater or gas heater?
We will be putting electric heater. Yeah, there's no gas close by.
Yeah, that's.
But there is electrical close by.
So the build out, when it's totally done and ready to go?
Probably hundred thousand or less. We're hoping much less because we're doing everything in-house. Most of it in-house.
And then does we need a? A washout for the paint? That collects it and it doesn't go into the storm drain?
We don't allow washout in any drains.
Okay.
So any paint that is residual may be old or reclaimed. He has to take it to. Our recycling dump. Yeah, we don't allow any paints. The same way with our, with the facilities. We don't dump anything out regardless if it was water based or not. Now, we have to take it to the Salt Lake County. Recycling.
And when will this be started to be built?
As soon as you say yes, next in two weeks. Our goal is to start all of these projects and beat the weather. Because we have other projects coming up after January, so we're hoping that. Cross your fingers.
Hey, any other questions?
Also, it looks like the overhead door is after, you're going to do that afterwards?
No, the overhead door will be part of that construction.
This says overhead door frame.
Yes, we will be installing the same time the overhead door. Because we have manufacturers that we use, much cheaper than some of these guys could provide. And we are putting windows, glass, so at least it looks like the front end because we cannot put that many windows on the garage.
Any no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
There's Eric. I don't see him. So Eric has the rest of our resolutions. Fifty, fifty one, fifty two, fifty three. So we'll turn the time over to Mr. Madsen.
All right, it's that time of year. We need to start purchasing vehicles. So our first resolution is. The leftover of what we had left in our budget. You guys let us order the seventeen early. We got them and got them in. Now this is the remainder of our budget. For the light replacement. So you'll see we got a couple of the Ford Mavericks going to fire inspections. Um, we got an F one fifty, an F three fifty and a Maverick going to parks. And then we have four more of the police interceptor SUVs. And seven Toyota Camrys for PD. And that'll take us to the one point nine for our light replacement budget.
Any questions? Any questions?
Uh, without. Much detail, I was just curious on the. Difference on the upfitting cost between the SUV and the Camrys, but that's pretty big difference.
Yeah, we do a lot more. We put the big lock boxes in the back of them. You put the cages and you don't have any of that in the Camrys. Right there, that's probably four thousand, five thousand dollars in them two items. Then we do a lot more lights on the patrol because they're, they're out in, you know, the traffic. The detectives are pretty minimal. They got some in the headlights, uh, yeah, headlights and the windshield and the rear windshield. Two in the cross windows and, and that's it. Gun locks and inverters and all kinds of stuff in patrol. You had to come over and see one that we get finally. Getting them close to done. There's a lot to go into the patrol vehicles. Next one?
I mean fifty one.
Okay, this is. Hope we're on the right one. The.
The two trucks.
Yep, the two trucks for Public Works. We got an F five fifty and an F one fifty. They'll both be uh. Used in their operations. And is that operations and what is that new assignment for the F one fifty?
Stormwater inspections.
Stormwater inspections. There. I mean, it, I look at that and I put them numbers down on there for you guys and. And I'm, I'm surprised as you are to see them prices. I mean, things have just gone up. So much. I mean, to think that it were ninety thousand dollars for a plow truck for an F five fifty is just. It's high. But we are buying the things, we're buying them in stainless steel. The, the beds and the solters so that hopefully we can get two uses out of them before we have to replace them next time. All right.
And you too.
Any questions on that one? Next one's the street sweeper. We've, we had plans, we had a really good plan set in place that we were going to replace these every, every. Every two years. Now it kind of backfired on us because they said they're probably going to be two years to get one after we order it. So we'll have to revisit the rest of these a little bit later on, but. It's just kind of what it is. They say in eighteen and we talked to him today and they said probably closer to twenty four months to get them. Seems like we've gotten worse this last little bit, like we've, we've fallen back into the takes forever to get stuff and. So that is the sweeper. Uh, they can't even give us, we usually have a trade in value to give to you guys, but it's so far out. He can't give me a trade in value, you know, two years in the future. So we have to wait to see what he's going to give us in our trade in. We take good care of them though and we'll, we'll get the most that we can out of them. The last one is a ten wheel dump truck. And this is a new truck. It's not replacing anything. It is. Being added, I think, to their new plow district that they have. And this was approved in the program mods. And. It's crazy to me that the upfitting cost is almost as much as the purchase price of the truck. It is insane. But we're looking, you know, that's three hundred thousand dollars for a, a big ten wheel plow truck. Same thing though, we have the, the brine system, the salt bins and then the plow all on that.
Are you guys still building the brine?
No.
Yourselves or they're getting manufactured somewhere else now?
No, they, they bought a machine and they're making it there at Public Works, but just not on, not on my end. I think that's it.
Any other questions on those last two? Okay, thanks, Eric. All right, um. Does the council have any objection to adding these eight resolutions to the consent agenda on the regular meeting, October twenty second?
I think they're big enough.
Anybody else have an opinion? No other opinions? Okay. That works for me. All right, we'll go to our communications and we have. Michaelie or Michaela, Mikel, not even close, Law with USU here and she's going to. Give us a well being survey update. Yep, that'd be great. And then just give us your name when you get up there as well.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Mikel. And I am from Utah State. I work with the Environment and Society Lab. And we put together the well being survey for the state of Utah that residents in West Valley partook in. That was in the spring and maybe this already circulated. Have people seen this before? Or is this new? Is this new? Okay, sweet. So I'm just going to run through the data so that's a little more digestible for you. Um, yeah, so we'll just begin and let me know if you have questions throughout it. Okay, so the survey project goals and. USU is a land grant university and one of the main goals is to make sure that our research. Is community oriented and it's going out to the public. So that's a big goal of this well being survey. And folks in West Valley partook in the spring. And all of the city reports for the whole state are now available. So. You're welcome to go to this website if you want to take note of that. It's really interesting stuff, especially um seeing how like rural and urban are so vastly different. That's a big indicator that we're seeing right now, which is probably not a surprise to you. Okay, so this was kind of surprising for West Valley. Um, I don't think this is any note for dissemination of the surveys. I think whoever did that here did a great job, but. West Valley only had a hundred and forty nine folks participate in this. Um, and relative to other cities like Orem and Sandy, they had about thirteen hundred responses. So I don't know why that was in West Valley, um, but a pretty low number of survey responses here.
Was it advertised the same method in both communities?
Yeah, the exact same. And I don't know who in your council or someone in West Valley disseminated this. Um, but it was supposed to be done through the exact same methods in each town.
Right, but you don't know that for sure that it happened that way?
I don't, I didn't send this out, so I'm just reporting. So I, I don't have all of the answers, but I'll make note of that and come back to you and let you know. Okay, so for the demographics in West Valley. Um, who we hear for, from is really important to us and this graph just kind of shows. What we polled from the survey relative to the census in West Valley. And. The kind of biggest point here is that the groups underrepresented in West Valley were males. Um, those who didn't go to college, non whites, um. That's kind of the biggest representation here of the poll that we didn't get in the survey. So I just kind of want to point that out as a caveat, like going through the data. That we had such a small number of survey responses that it's obviously not a good representation of West Valley. Um, in general. And we found that West Valley's responses when folks responded to. And we found that West Valley's responses when folks responded to personal well-being, their personal well-being in West Valley, it was very aligned with uh most of the other towns and cities in Utah. Um, but there's just kind of this like average response to personal well-being. Um, that it's not particularly high or low here. It's maybe on the lower end for cities of the same size. It's one thing we've noted here. Oh, sorry, I went to the end. Okay. All right. And then the next question that we were asking folks is community well-being questions. Um, and West Valley was slightly lower on the community well-being responses relative to other cities of the same size, um, but that is just kind of this like middle average clustering of how people perceive community well-being in West Valley. And I'm sure this is no surprise, but um we note that you know, income, higher income is usually correlated with higher well-being and West Valley's income is on the lower side, especially relative to surrounding areas. Um, and that's, like I said, usually correlated with lower well-being in general. Right, and this is kind of a complicated looking matrix, um, but we just asked folks twelve to rate twelve categories of well-being and the importance of those in their lives. Um, and this shows that in West Valley, safety and security, mental health, family life, living standards are of high value and the red zones, kind of these dots down below, um, they're not rated as high, but they're kind of like in a red zone, which usually means that um they're kind of of concern in the area, so safety and security and environmental quality are noted here in West Valley. And we asked folks um how connected they feel here and their perception of community connection in West Valley. And there was definitely a mixed response in West Valley, um, once again, kind of a clustering in the middle. And West Valley comes kind of low on our, shows up low on our graph overall, um, comparing other communities. But we don't think this is really all that uncommon for larger cities, but you'll kind of see that West Valley is is down here um in response to community connection. And this is just kind of noting that um well-being, which is no surprise, is obviously connected to um mental health and connection to community. So the higher your connection to community in general, usually the higher your mental health and your mental well-being. Um, so we're just kind of noting that here. You can see this graph is fairly easy to read. Let me know if you have questions as I go. Um, and I think this has been sent out or it will be, so if folks want to go through this again, you're welcome to. All right, so this is one thing we've noted in West Valley that respondents said that they're very active here physically. Um, biking and walking is something that's very common here. And statistically, we found that um walking and biking are definitely related to well-being, so this is a great sign for West Valley. Um, and of course, community connection is correlated to, you know, how many community events are going on. And the efforts the city puts into these things pays off for those who actually participate. That's kind of what this graph is relaying. And once again, kind of West Valley falls into this averaging here when folks were talking about population growth and economic growth. Um, for the most part, folks here said that it is um just right. Although population growth folks are noting might be on the high end, like it's a little too fast for folks here. And then looking at the top concerns in West Valley, you'll note this little cluster right here, I'm sorry. Air quality, public safety, affordable housing are the top three in West Valley. And something that we thought was kind of interesting here is that you'll notice that access to culturally appropriate food is way down the very bottom. Um, but this also could be that the surveys didn't get out to your Hispanic or non-white community. Um, which might have skewed this a little bit. And the question of what do people value most about West Valley City, um, cultural diversity, family, location, recreational activities and community are all very high in the responses. In terms of what could be done to improve well-being, um, a lot of folks noted transportation. But we're wondering if this is slightly skewed because UDOT asked us to put a question on the survey, and so I think that may have been top of mind for people. Um, they answered the UDOT question and then they maybe answered this one. So transportation, better road conditions, improved trash, traffic control are um of maybe some concern here, but like I said, it may have been skewed with the UDOT uh question. And you'll notice these kind of additional comments that people said about West Valley. They have great pride in their community. Um, but they do need maybe improved safety and security, need for green and open spaces. And cleanliness of town could be tended to. Um, these are all additional comments that are open comments that any of you can look at if you want. Um, people were able to respond in long form. So you can go through those if you'd like, if that's of interest to you. And then I believe West Valley asked us to ask these particular questions coming up next. So the outdoor trails in West Valley. Um, eighty percent of respondents said that they use um outdoor trails and in general, and then sixty five percent use trails in West Valley specifically. So that's pretty high, we've noted compared to others. And then this, I know, was a specific question that you were curious about in West Valley that we asked specifically here. Um, so access to resources in regards to childcare and legal resources are fairly important here. And they obviously skew a lot higher for those who have children, specifically children under five. Um, access to childcare is of high importance. You can see there, it's eighty six percent. And I think that is it. Um, so like I said, we have a lot of data and information on every city that we looked at throughout Utah, but West Valley in particular, we have tons more um resources and data available if you're interested. We can look at anything in particular that you're curious about. And if you want us to do a survey again, we could come back with more specific concerns that you have as a city and look at those. Yeah, so that is it. Do you have any questions for me? Anything I could clarify?
Is this the first time we've done this in West Valley? I, it seems like we've done this before.
So you did it, I think in twenty nineteen was the first round, so it's been a few years. Um, and we will do another round of this in two years, is the hope, that we'll have funding for do, to do it again. So yeah, if there are concerns that are more relevant to your city right now, um, we could tailor our questions to that. And also I think that another thing that could be helpful here is having the survey available in Spanish. I don't know if that was um available, so that might bring in more surveys and a diverse group.
Do you recall what the participation uptake was the previous survey?
Do you know what? I don't know. Um, I'll make note of that and ask. I would imagine that it's maybe the same. That's what we've we've found in the past, um, looking at other cities that I can think of. It's been about the exact same, yeah. So I don't know, like I said, I don't know what um like modes of disseminating the survey went down in West Valley, but yeah, it was, it was a small percentage of participants here. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just think it would be interesting to see progress or lack of progress over the years.
Yeah, absolutely.
Results from previous surveys to this one.
So we have all of the survey reports from every year that we've done this online, so you could go to West Valley and see the participation from, you know, the years that you've done it, um, and the participation from any other town or city you're interested in. But you're right, that would have been interesting to look at.
Is that website on any of this?
Yeah, I'll show it to you. Let's see, it's like at the very beginning.
Yep, right there. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I know it's a small N or sample size, but is there, is it possible to disaggregate this in terms of like a heat map of where in the city most of these responses are coming from?
That would be really fascinating. I don't think we asked specific location because we wanted to remain anonymous for folks. We don't, but going forward, that's, that's really interesting. Um, I think that could provide some interesting data.
I don't know if there's one neighborhood or one
Yeah.
dissemination site that was really effective.
Yeah.
If you didn't get through other corners of the city.
We didn't, we just looked at those demographics, but a location is a great idea. I'll make note of that. Anything else?
Not seeing West Valley on your two thousand nineteen report.
Is it not on there? Does it have any other dates from earlier?
Doesn't have West Valley on there at all. That's West.
So maybe West Valley, this is your first year, but you mentioned that this sounds familiar. I'm not sure. This is my first time doing.
This is staff, staff is saying this is the first year.
Oh, this is the first year. Okay.
Maybe just when we approved that it would happen that I remember here.
It's been a long, ongoing process, so yeah, maybe it took a while to get approval. Um, but is this something that West Valley would be interested in doing again? We could look at specifics or?
I think after we view it, staff will reach out if they Okay. It's necessary.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you so much. Hey, Mr. Thomas, would you like to come answer some questions of how it was put out into the community? Like, no?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, Craig Thomas, Community Engagement and Culture. Um, so we did use the usual methods. Um, the survey was in multiple languages as well. It was in Spanish. Uh, so we used Facebook, Instagram, the website. Um, community events, we did some in-person outreach at Decker Lake as well. Um, am I leaving off? I believe we also did
Bills.
I think we did the utility insert. I would have to double check to make sure it went on onto the update in that. Um, but so we used all the mechanisms that we normally use for this, including the events and some in-person outreach at Decker Lake.
Looking at, sorry.
Nope.
Looking at some of these other studies that happened in twenty two and twenty one. And a lot of these cities only had two or three or four hundred responses themselves, so even though we're on the low end, it's still, I think it's pretty low participation.
We tried.
Yeah, so the poster that was out that we could put the dots on, did that have anything to do with this study or is that a totally different at the community events?
That is community preservation. That was part, yeah, that was part of Peggy's outreach with the CDBG and HUD funding.
Okay.
But we did have posters up too, now that you say that. We had some posters around too.
But I was just making notes so I could put more dots on next time.
And we were told this was the first year that we did this.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, um, we have a development agreement standards review with Mr. Pastrick next.
Mayor? I've been trying to promote me one more time and maybe wasn't quick enough to hit accept there's. Thank you. This was actually information the council requested to look at our standards for uh amenities in multifamily developments. And so considering what's in our code now, um, what was the history behind that? And then how some of our recent projects that have been improved stack up against those standards. So I'll uh jump in here with the information. So first of all, I'm sorry, this is small. There's there's a lot that's in the code. So uh we have two sets of standards. So you have standards for projects where you have stacked units, so apartments or condos where you have units on top of one on top of the other. And then we also have standards for units that are attached to the side of each other, so that'd be like townhomes. So the first slide we're looking at here would be the standards for projects that are stacked. And it's basically a graduated scale, so uh as the size of the project increases, the number of of amenities required increases. So for example, if it's less than fifty, you just have to have one, but then you, if you go to projects over a hundred, they have to have five. And then in the table on the right, you can see there are um a number of we call major amenities, generally ones that are more expensive, and then you have the minor ones there on the right. Um, and the the major difference here between the standards today versus what they were originally, so a little bit of history here. We first started, uh, or first had amenity standards in the code uh in two thousand six. And it, so not to say we didn't uh look at amenities before, but that's when we first actually spelled out, we'd like to see these kinds of amenities and we, we said you had to have so many per the size of the project. How they've changed, so we actually updated these in twenty twenty, so the main reason or the main way that these changes, we expanded the list, we added more choices. But then we also um made certain features that before before were optional are now required. So for example, back in two thousand six, uh, doing things like a garage or onsite management or having like a patio balcony were optional, and those are all now required. So in in that sense, we actually require more because before you could choose to do those, now you have to do those, those features. So looking now at this, at this list, diving in, looking at a specific project here and all make this a little bit smaller so I can read the screen. All right, so this is the project I know that was brought up a few weeks ago. This is the H two O lots on Deco Lake Drive. Uh, so all in, there's two hundred and eighty six units, so based on the code, that's five amenities that are required. So we've listed here the ones, if you go just based on what's in the code, how many they have. So in this case, they they've actually employed eleven um amenities that are in the code, but then they also included other features that aren't in the code. So this one uh far exceeded uh what's in the code. Now, the last one there I'll I'll mention, um, they actually opted to uh pay over half a million dollars to improve the uh Salt Lake County Decker Lake Park, which is essentially right across the street. Uh, that one, I think they really did is a how to put this, as a an extra uh incentive to re uh change the zoning on the property, maybe is the way to put that. Um, but yeah, so this is an example where they they far exceeded what's in the code and included features that aren't in the code. So another project uh that's actually uh basically complete at this point. Just across the street from the Maverick Center, so the Decker Station Apartments. So two hundred nineteen units, again, five that are required. In this case, again, uh they exceed what's in the code. They have a total of eleven and then included a few others again that aren't actually listed in the code, so they're again, far, far exceeding what's required in the code. Then another one that's uh nearing completion, this is the the project just uh west of Costco. So two hundred sixty three units, again, five required, uh and similar to the other ones, they are exceeding the amenities that are required by code and include a few others that again, aren't listed in the code. Then shifting to uh atta, or attached products, so again, this would be the amenity list for um projects like townhomes. So the the main difference here is that the the list of choices is much smaller and really, um, it, when you compare this with the other list it, when you compare this with the other list, it makes sense because when you start getting into uh denser projects, more of the amenities are on the inside of the building as opposed to outside. These tend to be mostly um ones that are outside. So project here, this is um villages at twenty-seventh that is a townhome project. So this is for sale. There were five required. And in this case, they did exactly that. They did five. Um, so didn't exceed the code and just follow what's in the code. And then one other example, this project's still under construction. The loss on thirty-fifth, there's fifty units here, so two, uh two required and there's five uh from the ordinance. So hopefully that answers the questions council asked in terms of, again, what's in the code? You know, what, how that compares with what the code was before, and then finally how some recent projects stack up against the code.
Okay, any questions for Steve?
Walking path, can you count like sidewalks leading to residences or does that?
Right, yeah. So in this case, you will, it's, and it's a fairly small property, but um they have this walkway that kind of goes around the perimeter of the site. So not, not just the walkway on the roadway or like you say, walkways going to the units, but something, something in addition to that.
The package locker that's listed as, as an amenity. See that as just a standard for high-density apartment buildings? I just see that as being.
The one, the ones that have done, they've done that tend to be the, the very high density. So like where you have structured parking, for example, the, the Decker Station project, I actually looked at that recently and they have a, theirs is, you know, very nice. They even have like a, an Amazon package where you can, one of their pods or whatever you, you call those Amazon pods in the facility, but not all of them do that.
Building lobby, is that an amenity or is that just kind of, it goes with big buildings?
It, it tends to be more a function of those larger um structures. So if you think about say garden-style walk-up buildings, those are all kind of on their own stand alone where that doesn't really exist. That's more a function of, yeah, the, the larger, really high-density projects that have that kind of a feature.
I don't look at it as a amenity, you know? Feature of the large buildings.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh Steve, I think the first one, you mentioned about two thousand six, uh that's we start doing this and then can we review that like every five years?
So the, the next change was in two thousand twenty. So it was fourteen years later that we made a change. Um, but certainly we could, if the council directs, we could review this more frequently, but the, the last change was in, was about four years ago.
Oh, four years ago. Okay. Good. Um, here, I'll tell you a couple of stories and I, I want to hear from other council members. Four years ago, I ran into a bishop. I don't want to bring a stake and judges, but but I have to tell you this story. Um, this is very close to me. And he came over and said, Tom, he covered the area, the Redwood Road, Inclade, that one nearby, we uh thirty-eight hundred, thirty-eight hundred sixty south, go to Redwood Road to forty-one hundred south. So he covered the whole that apartment complex. It's a lot of them. And as I said, Tom, it's a high turnover every year. Cost a lot money for it to change. Rent for the new home, help them out. Few years later, he became a state president. And I ran into him again and said, Tom, uh, you know what? We really like Fairborn Station. More stable people, they don't move out and in. It's like other apartment complexes on Redwood Road. Um, last month, I ran into another bishop. And, and he covered, actually he covered the area for the Redwood Road area. He said, Tom, we have a high turnover every year. We spend a lot of money. Four years ago, I heard that story. Last month, I heard that story. The same comment, same thing Sunday happened. I roll around with the police officers. One of particular police officers told me this, Tom, I used and I, I used to live in that apartment Inclade, that thirty-eight sixty. Twenty years ago, we had a lot of problems. Today, we still have the same problems. What I'm trying to say is we want to bring this city up to another level. We got to do something like Fairborn Station. They can pay a bit more money, but they like it and they stayed there for a long, long time. And good for the city, good for order, faith, um churches, whatever we call, you know what I'm saying? Only uh just for our, other, other face too. I think it's a better for our community, the better offer of community. I don't want to put too many people into one spot and so not in there. A sad to see that, just like police officers. I lived there for twenty years ago. I lived there. We have so many problems. Today we have the same. It's sad to hear something like that. It's a we want to turn the city around. We want to raise something more, a little bit higher. And at the, that's our goal. Kind of like Deco Lake. We have amenities, really nice. They go extra mile to build that area. It's so nice. People live there. They really like it. They pay, they pay a little bit more money in other places, but I think they like that place. Uh, I talked to a number of people there and they enjoy staying there. So I want to see something like that to happen in our city. It's not like twenty years ago happened. So many things, so many problems. Now the same. I think that's, I don't want to hear that. Yeah, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
You like the hammock lounge? Would be opposed to have that as one of our standard amenities.
If single family resins.
Or just the apartments.
Or anything.
But yeah, cool. So thanks for the review on that.
Yeah. And I'm pretty sure the rents reflect the amenities. So. Which one? I heard some of the rents today about died. So. Is H two O, do we know how much they're getting a month for rent?
So their, their three-bedroom units are twenty-seven hundred a month.
It's like Fairborn Station.
Fairborn, their three bedrooms are three thousand.
And I think the newer complexes are going to have more stability than the older ones. It's just a different price point than what your commitment is. I'm not sure. I mean, looking at the amenities list. I thought it was pretty well done. I mean, I know things change over the years. I don't hope we want to add more to it. Everything you add just ups the rent.
I kind of like think uh when you put a pool, they're gonna go with like Deca Lake, they go flowing area waterfall. All the things so in sure without adult, senior, young kid, kiddo, everybody.
So under swimming, outdoor swimming pool, they could do that within that classification?
To do like a waterfall type feature?
Yeah. I mean, they could do that on their own.
Correct. They could. Right now, they're just, they're, they're not getting any extra credit for that. It's just to kind of add on.
And we could add that to the list and they may choose not to put it in. They're gonna do the ones that work best for the clientele. They're gonna grab. Because yeah, with how times have changed, oh, outdoor sports court, never mind. That kind of all encompasses pickleball. Right. Because pickleball wasn't a thing ten years ago.
Right.
Like it is now.
When we did make the change in two thousand twenty, we, we tried to look at what was, you know, what we were seeing in some of the, some of the projects and tried to be more comprehensive in the choices.
Hey, anybody else have other comments?
Just that in the examples that you have, at least uh a couple, not this one. Uh, well, yeah, on this one, we, they're exceeding what our standards are. And maybe that's market-driven and to lure in residents, but we need to make an adjustment to align with what they're already doing or market dictate what they want to do.
So I think ultimately that's the decision of the, the council. We oftentimes what folks will do in the vast majority of these projects, in fact, I'd say all of these projects involve a zone change. And so oftentimes in, in order to get the zone changed, they're offering up more as a, hopefully in order to, to get approval on their zone change. I think that's a big factor in that too. Is to show that, hey, this is a, this is a project that is exceeding the city standards and is a, is a maybe an argument for why it should be approved. But uh, but certainly we could, if, if the council's desires to raise the balance, we certainly can do that.
Apparently we just have threshold on the number of these amenities. We don't actually have a list of required amenities, right?
Correct. It's, it's the, you, you get to choose what they are, but you do have to have so many, right? And although there are, there are a few things such as um garages and like having a patio or balcony that once were optional, but are now required. So there are certain things we just say, you, you have to do that. It's, it's now the standard.
So it'd be like certain things they're giving, make a requirement, you know, A, B, C, D, something what I do to do, can we, we can do that, right?
Does that get to your question? Like, yeah, there are some things that everyone's just doing nowadays that we may as well just include as. So that kind of works for us. Wait, I'll turn that question to you then. Are there things that everyone's just doing as, as added that maybe we should just standardize?
There's, I'd have to go back and look at that if there's some commonalities across all the projects. I would say it, it would depend on the, the type of project. So for example, the really high-density ones, right? Like the ones over by the, you know, Fairborn, the, the ones over by the Maverick Center. Those tend to have similar features because they're, they're all indoors because the building is, it's very, very dense. So there are some commonalities that way, but as you decrease the density, the, the types of choices people choose are, are going to be more outside things, for example.
Probably don't. But I wonder if you have any data on a business center or a community room with a kitchen, like are they even used? We, we have similar requirements with some of the housing we, we build where you have that certain amenities and one of them is a community room with or without a kitchen and it just feels like it's a cheap way to get points for amenities, but nobody uses it. Offering wifi for the whole, whole project. It's like, eh, that probably, it probably gets used more than a community room, you know, but.
So one, th- these are just anecdotal, but one, um, it's the Sage Valley project on the former Kmart site. In their situation, they, they did a business center, but they actually have programming where kids can come and get, like do their homework and they have someone there to help them. So in that case, because of the way they programmed it, it does get used. Um, so I, I, but if, yeah, if it's just a room with computers, probably not as much. Um, so I think it, it depends on how, how they're programming and how they're using it.
And then some community centers get used to the point where they're worn down after two years.
They're abused.
Yeah, they're abused. And then there's others that, yeah, you don't see much use out of them. So it's just the clientele that get in there. I don't have an objection to adding more options. I'm not sure that I'm in the mood to be in favor of mandatory, making it mandatory to have certain options in there.
I think that's more market and population driven.
Yeah. Because they want what amenities are going to draw the most people and they'll be able to get best rent and most stability for them. I think turnover is not great either. Cleaning, re-advertising. So I think all of these developments probably want as much long-term residence as possible. I just think how well they're kept up is probably the turnover rate. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we'll go to our council calendar. Did anybody have any? Oh yeah, the restricted parking. I think your name was next to it. I checked it off. We're done. Okay. The on-street parking.
Thank you. So I've got one more presentation. If you can stick with me for just one more, Nicole, if you can promote the one, that'd be great.
So that you're promoted.
Oh, am I still? Okay, sorry. Out of this one and one more. So just a little bit of background on this presentation. So the council, um, as discussed, boarding homes and parking restrictions many times now. And so uh as the Mr. Peely and I have spoken about ways to um address those concerns, we uh came up with a, a potential program for the council's consideration. And so just by way of some comparison or similarity. So I know the council's also recently talked about um speed, uh speed bumps in neighborhoods. And instead of just, you know, putting those everywhere, we have a system or a program for when someone requests those, they have to go through a process and, and we, you know, do traffic counts and look at speeding and, and have a system for that. So the, the, the discussion that Mr. Peely and I had was, well, is there a way to have a similar approach to uh restricting parking in residential, on residential streets? So that's, that's what this presentation's about. And uh just looking to get the council's thoughts on this. So first of all, this, a couple of images. So this, uh, this is not a Toyota ad. This just happened to be the uh the, the images that we had handy. So uh we do have some residential streets that are, that have thirty-two feet of of pavement or more. And in those cases, you can see from this drawing, you actually can park cars on both sides of the street and have cars pass each other and you're good. But uh the image on the bottom, uh, we have a lot of streets in the city that are just twenty-five feet of width, width, which was the, the county standard for many years. And in that case, it really is really tough unless you're, you know, driving a, a moped or something to have cars parked on both sides of the street and then have cars pass each other on the uh, in the middle of the street. So why that matters? The thought would be if you have a street that's thirty-two feet or more pavement, there's really not a need for parking restrictions because there's room for parking on both sides of the street. But anything less than that, it does get tight and maybe we would want to consider that. So here's, here's the, a, again, potential formula that could be used. So are cars parked along uh more than sixty percent of the available curb space for parking? So what does that mean? The available curb space would be if you take a stretch of road and then measure the curb length on both sides, but then subtract out the driveways, right? Because obviously you can't park in front of someone's driveway. So again, the available curb space would be the total curb length minus all of the driveways. And we're suggesting um that if, if the number of cars parked is taking up more than sixty percent of that available curb space, then Of that available curb space, then a, a street would be potentially eligible for. Or parking restrictions. And sorry, I know it's got some math here. I'll try to, to explain that. So normally, whenever you have parallel parking, let's say it's parallel parking in a commercial development. We require twenty-two feet for that parking space if it's in a, you know, a commercial development. So what we would do for simplicity is to say, for every car parked on a street. We're going to assume twenty-two feet because that's the space that you need typically for a parallel stall. So you, you, if you look at a stretch of street. Counted the number of call cars, multiplied that by twenty-two, that's the amount of space being consumed for parking. And then you divide that by the available curb space, which again is the total, total curb length minus the driveways. And there'll be a test after. All right. So the uh, so here are just some examples. And now. When you look at these streets, uh, it turns out that, of course, all the aerial photography is taken when people are at work. So park, there's not a whole lot of cars parked down the road, but these are just examples of how it would be calculated. So for example, the image on the left. If, uh, so that that the total, total curb length is uh, sixteen hundred and fifty feet. But then if you subtract out the driveways, that puts you eleven seventy. Then you can see there that in this case, you could have up to thirty-one uh, cars parked on that street before we would look at. Uh, parking restrictions. So I won't, uh, there's a few other examples here, but it's just showing how the math would be uh, potentially done. So again, we're not looking at, uh, in these cases, the number of cars that are actually parked just because it's in the middle of the day. So to, to summarize here. If the council was interested in doing a process like this. What could happen is that uh, a resident on the street or an owner on the street could make uh, make the request. The staff could go out and count vehicles along a stretch of a street. Now, obviously, that would require either doing it late in the evening or very early in the morning. So you get an accurate, accurate count of that. And then someone back in the office can actually just med, do the measurements of the curb length and subtract out the driveways. That's, that's pretty easy measurements to take. Then if the number of, uh, if that, that parked car ratio is over sixty percent. Then the council could hold a public hearing where we would actually notify people on that street that, hey, we're considering parking restrictions. Uh, to get uh, input on that. And then ultimately, if the council decides that they would like to impose restrictions. Then we would actually put up no parking signs on one side of the street. So let me talk a little bit about the sixty percent, how we landed at that. So if, if you think about, uh, if cars are all parked on one side of the street and they, they consume all of that space, that's fifty, okay? And by doing fifty percent, you've got room for cars to pass each other. Once you get over that, it starts to get a little more complicated. And obviously, in in real life, people don't all line up on one side of the street. They alternate. And so you, you often, if you have a, a, um. A car that's approaching, you'll just pull over to the side. Well, if the more congested parking gets, your opportunities to pull off to the side diminish, right? So that's how we, we came up with sixty is at that point, you're, you're exceeding the equivalent of parked cars parked on one side of the street. And you're starting to get to the point where you're, you're having to dodge more or you have fewer options for dodging oncoming traffic. So that's um, again, how we arrived at that number. So again, this is, uh, this is a suggestion. If the council wanted to have a, a process for considering parking restrictions on residential streets.
When we say um, driveway with, we're including our five-foot. Great barrier on your side because we're not allowed to park.
When we did the number, sure, we didn't, but we certainly could.
So you're gonna go out, maybe check not only once, but you gotta check maybe. Two or three times, make sure, you know, very much uh. Good number. As I'm saying.
We, we could, yeah, you, you could have a scenario, maybe you do, you know, late evening, early morning, just for comparison. And maybe different days as well.
Concern I have is that you just push all the parking on one side or the other and then. Somebody gets all the parking in front of their house.
Twenty-four seven and no guests.
We did also consider, maybe you, you alternate, but the concern we have with that is that. It could be confusing, but we have a pocket here, a pocket there. Whereas, you know, one side of the other is, is easier for people to, to handle, but you're right. It, it means. You kind of have winners and losers in that case. But even with pockets, you're going to have winners and losers still too, but that. If someone, their particular yard happens to be where there's the no parking area, then it's, it's the same issue.
You know, a lot of people that have the parking on their side, they're clearance to be able to see who get out of their driveway is. Less all the time. But if parking's overloaded anyway, you're not seeing to get out of your driveway ever.
Yeah, one of your examples, I've got. A founder, there's like Gazelle, and it's bad. All the one side, which most of us all on one side anyways. Because these four houses on the west side have all the cars.
I don't know what the perfect solution is, but I do like having a more objective. Systematic way of determining this. This still takes into consideration residents complain, right? But also, um, isn't just the, what could be a personal preference of let's do it on this street and not this street. Um, if we were to consider something like this, are we able to pilot this? For a couple of runs or does this require a citywide implementation?
I certainly think we could do a pilot and try it maybe on a couple of, of streets and, you know, do, do a study on a couple of those streets, but. We just, uh, Mr. Peely and I talked about this, we had envisioned this being an option just throughout the city where someone could make the. Make the request. Um, and then just go through this, this process or something similar that if the council wanted to, for example, say, we're going to go with. Seventy percent instead of sixty percent.
Jump in a trial?
I'm in favor of, you know. No park, overnight parking, so you have to convince me of the whole.
Last year or the year before, we had. I'm trying to remember what neighborhood it was up by. At the theater. But there were some no parking signs that were put up on accident. We had. A lot of calls on that. Pretty upset residents that we couldn't put no parking in the residence.
Area.
Areas. So I wonder if we're. Shifting our uh. Dissatisfied residents. One issue to another.
Yeah, but then you have the ones that live on a street where there's no on-street parking because of their neighbors, not themselves. You can't even park in front of their own house and they're complaining. So it's the, how many people do you keep happy with which? Ordinance.
I don't, I don't know that this would fix that. Right? I mean, it just makes less parking available. I don't know that this is the.
The right combination. I'm with Scott with the no overnight parking on the street. Because they didn't have all your parties, parties, do what you want during the day. You're not worried about it, but.
I can, this may be, maybe just a little, little background here. Like, first of all, I appreciate Steve and his team coming up with the formula and some type of process because. I, I think they've done a good job trying to figure out how to implement. You know, obviously, I think we kind of know where this has come from. So. You know, this, this has been proposed as a, as a tool to cut down on our. You know, other issues with boarding houses and. It's not just about providing more parking for those that need it because I think that's, that's absolutely right. You're going to limit parking. And so it's just a matter of who gets to the parking spot first. So it really is one of the solutions to limit these boarding houses and um. You know, I personally don't believe that this necessarily solves that problem, but we just don't know. We don't know if it does or or not. And. I think for, even for us to try, just from an operation standpoint. It's really difficult to just, you get a, you get a loud neighbor that comes, a loud resident that comes to city, city hall as they've done. And says, I want parking restrictions. It's really difficult for us to say, okay, just because you've come to city hall and complained, we're going to close your, your street down. And so, so one, it brings us, allows us to have consistency. If we do apply this, if we go forward. And then it does help us in, uh, you know, I don't like making. Uh, have policy that affects. And we, that's out there and we pick and choose how to implement, you know, where and where, when and where we implement it. And so it would have to be citywide if or not for a process that. That limits us having to go everywhere and close streets right up, up the gate. So. I think for us, it's, it's a matter of bringing a solution forward to, to try. So the question. That's fits among the, talked about, uh, you know. Some type of trial period or, or, uh, to me, I, I think this would allow us to do that. As opposed, if we don't have a process, then what would determine the trial period, uh, or what street we're going to do a. A pilot program on besides a resident complaining. This way, you know, other, other. Residents that come, they could see, okay, we gotta, there's a process in place. We have a public hearing. You know, so those that are maybe. You know, abusing the boarding housing uh, situation. We're going to have to come and justify why they don't want restrictions on their, on the street. And so this is, like you said, this is just. You know. A solution to be able to implement a pilot program without. Going outside of consistency. Being able to justify one street over another at this point. But we don't, it's something that we, doesn't have to be temporary, uh, permanent. We can try it out, but. Felt like we needed to have a process in place if we're going to, we're going to try it.
So we did go forward. It, it basically is a pilot program. So people come in and complain, we go through the process. Close down streets. We haven't closed anything down yet. So it would just be. Through that process, we would see, and then we could gauge if it's helping at all.
And like, we got a pilot street in mind right out.
It might have been one of the slides I showed. I saw a limo.
So this only takes one resident to start the process? It doesn't take a certain percentage like our speed bumps do?
We, we debated that and, and the reason we, we landed on a single version is that. It may be that you have a lot of boarding or rental situations where people, you, you can't get more people to sign on. Because they, they don't want, right, for, for reasons that we're trying to address. But that's why we did the, the public hearing is that. Having a resident complaint starts the process and, and, and we'll go out and do measurements. Now, if they don't pass the, the threshold, then that, it ends there. But if they do pass, pass the threshold, then we have a public hearing.
And is there noticing involved with that?
There would be. We would notice everyone on the street.
Not within three hundred feet of the street, just the street itself, correct?
Yeah, that was our guy. It was just the street itself. Anyone directly impacted.
If we do that on a street though, there's going to be spillover that will affect.
Oh, other people.
Neighbors. It's true.
If they're willing to walk. Yes.
The neighbors are not, they're going to oppose. It's going to end up in their front yard, so.
Like one or two streets away would be saying, don't do this.
What does enforcement look like? Boeing or fines?
Uh, it could be both.
So we're trying to get back on rental boarding homes. The problem with those homes is that. There's too much parking or other things too, right?
But the main one is the on-street parking.
But how do you enforce any of it, uh, the parking?
But then there's. Families that have lots of cars that. They're not causing those other problems, I guess. That are going to be restricted. Even though they're not the problem we're trying to fix.
In a normal neighborhood, I think you've got the transition between. Person who has all the teenagers, that has all the cars, and then you have the. All the kids are gone. They have no on-street parking. And those kind of blend out and it's not as much of a problem where I think the resident, the neighbors would be coming in asking for the survey. I think it's the ones with the serious problem that every stall on each side of the road is completely taken up. But I don't think. We have one boarding house in our neighborhood that I know of, but they have their parking, their whole backyard is concrete. So all the parking's off the street and back there. And the rest of the streets really aren't overparked. Because it's the natural, you've got kids, you've got extra family. I don't have it and it blends out. And it's only nights and weekends that you can't drive down the streets. On the ones that are.
So there's not enough parking on the. On the street. So we're going to make it so there's less parking available on the street.
And discourage the boarding houses. Yeah, and who's going to have first right on the street parking? About that part. This is why you need wide lots, three-car garages and parking on the side.
We can get all the boarding houses.
No, all the family just stays up there. That's what we had. I mean, we were a cul-de-sac, so there was no parking in front of our house. Because it was a mailbox and no space. But luckily, our lot went wide enough that. And deep enough. Back then, the setback was forty-five feet. So we can get two cars. We can actually get seven cars just in our driveway and then we have two in the garage. So when we have family parties, nobody has to park in the circle.
I think the proposal's an awesome start at the thought exercise, but there's so many nuances to this that. I know it's totally against our American love of cars and right to drive, but. We limit the number of cars allowed per property or household? Is that even a legal thing? Over on the, I'm just throwing it out there. Don't stone me, but.
But what, and this is, I mean, that's part of the process we went through with this, right? I mean, we've done. We get residents that come. I want my, I want parking restriction. Talked about, I've been talking about my parking restrictions. My, my honest opinion is that it, it will not solve the boarding house problem. Uh, but you will have these other problems, but I don't know. Like, I don't know if it will or not. And rather than do nothing. Because we've come back, you know, we've been scratching our heads trying to figure out what, what solutions are out there. Let's bring back something. At least we're, you know. This, because I don't have any evidence to say that it won't work either. And I don't want to go into this thinking, oh, let's prove that it doesn't. But the thing is, is for, even for us to try. Without a process, we open up a whole can of worms that I, and I don't think we want to deal with. we open up a whole can of worms that I, and I don't think we wanna deal with. We can't just close down the street just because a resident says, so. So, we have to go through and show this, and so if that's if that's a solution that we're kicking around still, then here's the process. If not, then let's not talk about parking restrictions ever again, right? Let's let's not, let's not. But if we're gonna continue to bring that up, this is the way we got, this is, this is the, the way to do it. So, don't we have some streets in our city that are residential and there's only parking on one side?
We do, it it's, it's a definitely the exception. One that comes to mind is uh near fifty-four hundred south and fifty-six hundred west, we have the Maverick and the McDonald's. There's the road that goes in where you can park on the north side, which is residential, but on the McDonald's side, we restrict parking on that side of the street.
Isn't there a neighborhood just off, just west of four thousand west, at about thirty-seven hundred south? That has parking restrictions on one side?
That one doesn't ring a bell, but maybe, I I'm just not familiar.
You have a man way.
Man, man way?
Not a private road.
That's a car, it's just really narrow.
It's a narrow street. And, and but I wonder if there are less boarding houses on that street because of this situation, and I mean, we have fewer problems with people renting their houses to a lot of people because there's no place to park their cars. Then that'd be something to look at to see if this sort of thing actually works. It'd be hard to to know. But but there's probably some people that live on that street to tell us, oh yeah, this one's a boarding house. Or no, I don't know of any that are. I don't know.
I do like the thought of
Go ahead.
Of uh restricting it at
Where's mud?
Not sure we had a majority on that.
And and we have other solutions brewing that we're gonna come back with, I mean, Steve has looked all over the state and even probably, I think he's talked to others, colleagues in the country. No one has a good solution to this boarding house uh issue, and so we figured that we're gonna have to keep going back to the drive board and coming back. This is, this is just one of them, this is one of these solutions that they brought up. This is a way to implement it, but we we do have another solution we'll we'll be bringing here.
Something the the overnight parking thing is a a point, folks around the table. What if we were to ask staff to look at a process like this? But the outcome being banning that overnight versus coming from one side of the streets to the others? That's, I I guess I'm just saying, I like that there's a process. I don't know that we have all the pieces right, but is that amenable for folks to look at?
And that would help our snowplow drivers. Because even though we say no on-street parking during storms, nobody moves their car.
Sure.
Stays there.
Some people.
Very few in my neighborhood move their cars.
There's a lot that stay out.
Yeah, but they're like, oh, really? That sign pertains to me.
I would be okay with folks are gonna that, if, you know, bringing that back to discuss a little bit more. And we have to do something, we're not doing anything now. If it's something that we can do for six months and it totally bombed, then we stop, you know, or we do five streets, whoever the first five are to come to us.
Say do this.
And there's probably, there will be unintended consequences too, but we won't learn about those or unintended costs to the city as well. We don't know, but we won't know in this, try so.
So is your suggestion to use this process, but take a street that's got a complaint and have no on-street parking overnight? And see if that works or not?
Sure.
Instead of the sixty percent and the, but it, you know.
I think it'll move things around the same way, but until we try it, we have no ideas. I wouldn't not, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Because we can use the same
Different result.
Right, it's it's the 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 parking restriction imposed would be no on-street parking during these hours, but just personally, I think it would make sense to still allow parking on one side, because I mean, part of the argument here in in the the road with, we came up with, it was more of a safety concern, right, of being able to pass each other, so um by allowing still on one side of the street, you're you're addressing the safety concern. Uh but then now you can just have it be within certain hours. We're, and that's really when it is a problem is, is in the evening hours anyway.
And I know one of the complaints is, and we've had to do it at our house, even with that many is, if the kids park behind you, you have to go move your car. So moving your car is still easier than parking on the next street over that doesn't have the restriction.
Bringing the boxes out of my garage so I can park my car in my garage. My wife's boxes out of the garage.
That's my biggest thing. I have to be able to put the two cars in the garage, two cars in a garage all the time.
Yeah, I'm open to try, I think it's well thought out and I I something.
So maybe do that one as a scenario as well? Just bring us like five and then we'll pick the best one.
Like I said, we have a
You have a plan B, let's
Well, I mean
Same old.
That we we have a, probably a willing participant, willing in the street.
Willing to go along with it, yeah. Hey, any other information for Steve before he sits down? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now to the council calendar. Are there any issues or everybody good with that? Potential future agenda items? Anybody have any?
There, I look it up, so I don't use. Um, oh yeah, some residents from Sunset Hills community. Were interested in, in looking at options of which the state and city law allow for quasi-private streets, uh and their issue is that um they're on private streets, but they're not gated, so they have folks coming through speeding or other traffic violations that um they would like the city to help them enforce. Current situation doesn't allow that, so um they wanted to at least discuss and find out if there are ways to make that quad, what's in the law is quasi-private roads a possibility or not, so. If there's a way to see if our city has done that or or not, or if there's to reflect your your private, you know, community and signed up for that. But I wanted to raise that on behalf of, yeah, I suppose.
So are they asking for police to monitor the speed and we can't do that on a private street? Yeah, that's kind of, yeah. Hadn't thought about that being a issue.
Yeah, but remember that you you cannot control a private street.
Yeah, that'd be interesting, we can report on that. Anyone else? Hey, council reports?
The hot club game, great seeing the Mavericks having people.
Parking laws work really.
I also met with a resident, not a resident, a business owner. They owned a restaurant on seventy-two and thirty-fifth, used to be a planet's
It's about a few things.
Yeah, anyway. They wanted to meet in person, came here, I met with them. They brought an extra person who I didn't know, turns out it was an attorney, so I had to pause the meeting, grab a city attorney. But basically, they felt they were unfairly I guess, on code enforcement type of issues of the business as well as a rental that they have, they own. Most of the complaints came from a neighbor that lived next to them and there's noise, lighting and other issues. Ultimately, um, the attorney stepped out and the the resident or the the business owner just vented and I listened. Round here, but interesting
Thank you. So I went to an IOC meeting two weekends ago, and they're very excited about bringing the Olympics to Utah and Maverick Center. So still moving forward, everybody's really excited, so that was good. No big changes, but they're just excited, so. That's my report. And then um on Jan or November twelfth, there is a opportunity for public input for a central, I need to get the exact wording, maybe Central Jordan River Reconnect Workshop. They're thinking, um, they're moving forward with a regional park along the Jordan River from two oh one to fifty-four hundred. And so this would be a great time for input. We'll all be here for city council. But hopefully staff will be able to go and give some input on that. But you can go to um their website, which I'll try to email out to you, but it's pretty much uh Central Jordan River Reconnect dot gov, so. It was through the Jordan River Commission is where I found out about it. So.
There's also the hospital side announcement.
But this is from four to seven, four thirty to seven, so like almost exactly when we're here.
Under, under our new schedule, are the council meetings already on our calendar?
Um, so I scheduled it through the end of the month, and then I, in November, I'll schedule Novembers. But it's just the second and fourth Thursday or Tuesdays.
Hey, any other reports? Okay, seeing none, we don't have a need for a closed session, okay, and so we just have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?